Okay, I call in our board's major meeting to order for July the 15th.
Bill, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand: one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, just a reminder, our meetings are recorded and these are all public meetings. Okay, for this quarter, the next item of business is the employee of the quarter. And do you have that?
I do. I'm going to read it because it's so eloquently put. The Yountella County Employees Excellence Committee was created to acknowledge and commend the efforts of employees who serve the citizens of the county efficiently and effectively with a focus on professional development and outstanding customer service. In that spirit, the committee wishes to share with you the nomination letter from your peers that warranted this recognition. Congratulations to Tamara Partney. Tamara Partney began her employment with Yountella County October 15, 2007. In the 10 years Tamara has been, has worked here, she repeatedly shows what an asset she is to the county. Tamara is among the first employees to take on additional tasks, fill in for others, and share knowledge with coworkers. Here are a few comments from her peers. Tammy goes above and beyond her duties. She's always willing to help whenever help is needed. She comes in early and stays late when needed. She has been an amazing trainer to me, being a new employee, and leads by great example. She always has amazing attitude and strives to make the workplace great. Tammy, if you would come up, please, I'd like to present you with these materials. And I do have a hanky here, so.
Is Bob Stoltz here for pictures?
It's wonderful. This is the letter that I just read. That's yours to keep. This award comes along with some perks. The perks are you've been awarded eight hours of paid time off, sounds like you won't take them very soon. You can get prior approval from your supervisor before using it, and then return it with your time card when it's used. Okay? And this is your certificate of excellence. And again, congratulations.
Tammy, these are yours too. This is the fun part. And you can share them if you want. Everybody can see that.
Very good. Do we have minutes?
I have, let's see, one more recognition before we get to it.
Oh, well, we'll go on with that.
It's just primarily a recognition of the response to the ads map pictures.
Wait until they get through the back here. Okay, other awards, recognitions this morning, I think Commissioner Alfredine has a letter.
We'd like to commend the sheriff's office for the work that they've been doing, the search and rescue in particular. There have been three incidents this year, two lost people and some people who were stranded across the river, up the Upper Walla Walla River. And the sheriff's office search and rescue went up and provided assistance with that, conducted the search. In that process, they used the latest technology. They have two or three drones there, and they were able to take pictures particularly of the fire that was out on the highway. There was a fire that broke out in the back of a truck along the highway that had to pull over. The drone was able to go in, actually up close and personal, and figure out what was going on with it, whether the emergency responders were safe going closer to respond to that, and they were able to do that with that technology. So I commend them for that.
Great, thank you. Okay, any other recognitions or awards? Let's move on. We don't have minutes to approve. So additions to the agenda, Doug? Okay, no additions. This is a point in time, if you're not specifically on the agenda as an item, under a business item, to have public input to the board. Is there anyone out there that wants to address the board? All right, thank you. There's a presentations, Nitro in the Blues. Who is doing that this morning?
He's not here.
They're not here? Okay, let's move right on then. Our business items are CHI Bond Issuance, and this is a public hearing. So at this time, I'm going to open this hearing for public comment, and I would ask for a staff report.
Yeah, I believe Mr. Bond is here. This is coming before the board on the request of CHI for the issuance of bonds and their counsel here. Mr. Bond is present and can give you the background.
Hi, my name is Greg Bond. I'm an attorney with Ford Carrington and Sutcliffe, and we represent CHI, the parent company of the local hospital that will benefit from the bond proceeds. And just briefly, nonprofits can take advantage of tax-exempt financing, just like municipalities such as the county, but they can't do it directly. They have to do it through some sort of municipal entity. So in this case, they're doing it through a Colorado entity. The parent company is going to take, the parent nonprofit is going to use tax-exempt financing to benefit multiple facilities throughout the country, including some here in Oregon and including some here in Yountella County. Whenever that happens, federal tax law requires there to be a public hearing and for there to be an approval of a local elected official. So that's what you're being asked to do today. The county is not responsible for the bonds. The nonprofit is responsible for the bonds. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
So there's no way that this bond or any of its implications would affect the county financially?
That's correct. Throughout all the documents, it's made clear that the county is just, is giving this approval in a limited purpose for the tax approval, but that the nonprofit is responsible for paying the bonds. That's correct.
This consolidates several bonding issues into one?
That's correct, yes.
We've done this over the years past, and it's a performance of non-specific that's something the county is required to do by statute. Okay, other comments, questions? Okay, at this time, are there any comments from the public? Okay, hearing done. I will close this public part of the hearing, and we will deliberate, and I am ready for a motion.
Mr. Chair, move we adopt order BCC 2017-0401.
I will second that. Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay, next item of business, Byron, you're up.
It's almost.
Commissioners, good morning. Byron Smith, Chair of the O-Tech Board, 1705 East Airport Road. Just wanted to give you a quick update. Construction continues to move along quickly. It's not as visible now that the major pieces are up, but a lot of the finished work is going on inside the various projects. And I've got a few pictures that I can share with you. So here's the restroom facility. We'll start here. So.
Can I go too far?
That's okay. Here's, this is the overall site picture that we're getting taken each week. And the biggest changes that you can see is they're starting to put the gravel in place for all the pathways and the roads near the arena. And then the grass really is starting to look nice and green on the commons area. Also, we had some volunteers through Agri Northwest take that parking area to the southwest there, and they disced it under a little bit, and then took a water truck and have then started to compact it a little bit to try to get it ready for parking during the fair and rodeo.
There were some piles of brush?
Yeah, those have all been cleaned out and disposed of.
And they went clear over to that west fence?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Okay, so here's a shot of the rodeo arena. They put the bleachers up in kind of two phases of this first bit, and they're working on the second piece right now. And they, they're moving quickly. You can also see right there that the lights have been moved up from the old arena. And then they've also installed their ticket booth that's on this side, so that project keeps moving forward. I took this shot just to show they've got a number of the light posts up. They've also got most of the siding and roof work done on the Mercantile Building, and that's moving along quickly as well. And this is the restroom facility that's kind of between the rodeo and the fair side. This, they're doing all the interior work right now. I know they're working to install sheet rock and FRP and everything, so that's moving along well. This is a shot of the barns. Also, I think maybe the next one will show, but the things are going well. They're getting finished, all the little small buildings that are inside the barns, so they're mostly electrical rooms and some small offices, and then in the small animal barn, they're putting in the showers and bathroom facilities. Those are all getting finished, framed and inside it. And there's the small animal barn. Also, just last week, started work on the fence that goes between the rodeo and the fair side, so that fencing is starting to go in. And then another shot of the commons area. The grass is looking good. I know the landscaper came in and treated for some of the weeds that have started to get in there, so.
Well, the office in the big barn, will that accommodate both 4H and F-15?
I believe so. I think there's two small offices.
All right, because they were concerned about that, both of the groups.
Right, I'm pretty sure that's the plan. And then you can see the announcers booth has been framed up, and they're starting to get ready to put the final siding on in their region, so things continue to move forward. Also, as I was talking before, we have received some applications for the general manager position. I'm going to share those with the board today, and we'll start, continue the process of selecting.
Are you going to send those whole packets out?
Yeah, I will. I'm going to scan them all together so we can look at them.
Okay, great.
Everybody got all of them.
So how much work's left until the fair?
I don't think you have time for me to get a hold of this.
We are going to put one on.
Yeah, we are. There's, you know, there's a lot of site work at the arena area as far as there's going to be some, there'll be sod installed, they're working on the landscaping. They're also, like I said, they're putting in the pathways and so forth. Those will all be, the curbs will be put in, and then the asphalt, but right now, we're shooting for the second week, not next week, I think, but the week after of July to have the paving contractor in there to finish all the paving that's left. The piping was installed for the, to connect to the Stanfield irrigation district. Now, the final pieces we need, the pump station was the longest lead time item, and it's on order, and we're still planning to have that done by the end of July.
Looked like they were working on it this morning.
Good, good.
The, what we thought was a mobile unit down at Stafford Hansel that we were going to move up for safety and security office, that is not a mobile unit. It is a modular unit with no access, nothing.
Oh, okay.
So we're still, county is still trying to figure out a company to move that.
Okay.
We don't know when, so that's going to be a slow process.
Okay, let's get it now. The site will be ready for it whenever we figure out how to get it there. Any other questions?
Appreciate you coming up and sharing that.
A month away.
I did leave with Melinda some documents related to the bridge loan that we're doing with Banner Bank, and Doug will take a look at it, and then we just need a signature on it.
Okay. George's name was on that, I think, because he was chair last year.
Yeah, he was chair when we started it. If we need to change.
No, let's not change it. He is our liaison to our budgeting process, so I'd rather have him continue to do that.
Okay, so.
And if something happens, then he's responsible.
So once that's completed, just let me know, we'll need to pick it up. It's not a big rush. We were able to get the check last week from the bank, and so it's just to formalize the documents.
Yeah, that was tongue-in-cheek, huh?
Yeah.
Nothing, nothing will happen, but.
No, no, we're going to get it, get it done.
Okay.
No problem. Any other questions?
Thanks, Byron.
Thank you.
Okay, next item of business is the Westfield addition road repairs, and this is being done under one of our agreements, LID agreement. So Tom, you've got the whole bunch of items here.
Yeah, but it doesn't add up to much. We'll come back. Public Works. Yeah, for the last three or four years, the residents up in Westfield Boulevard, which is a public road, it's not a county-maintained road, have asked for us to help them with some maintenance for reimbursement. So, and this is just another, another one of those requests from them that we go out and patch some potholes and send them a bill, and they'll send us a check. We've never had a problem. They've always been tickled to pay, and it's, and we, currently, right now, we have the time to do it just prior to chip seal, so it just made perfect sense to us to go ahead and try to help them out if we can, so.
So this isn't an LID?
No.
Okay.
No, this isn't an LID. This is just a, this is just a request to patch some potholes for reimbursement.
Since it is not a county road, just a public road, it requires board approval for public works. It's got any funds on it for help even do it.
Even, yeah, even though there's reimbursement, it just requires the board's approval that.
If they don't pay, you go take the potholes back? Recreate them?
We'll make new ones.
I'll send Commissioner Givens after him. He has a way with people.
Thanks.
You ready for a motion?
I'm ready for a motion.
Mr. Chair, move we adopt order RD 2017-05 approving the work on the Westfield addition roads.
Second. Questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. You ready for your paint truck?
Well, I hope so. We've, the paint truck, this paint truck wasn't on our want list for, that we're looking for, for equipment. However, when it did become available, we took, we're taking a very hard look at it and would like to purchase it. Currently, and for the past several years, we've used Morrell County's paint truck and to the tune of about anywhere from $6,000 to $10,000 a year that's what we pay Morrell County for the use of their paint truck. And what the difference is, is whether they have an operator that comes, and we have to pick up the operators, wait this along with some other things. This truck came available with surplus properties for $8,500. It just simply seemed like good business to us. We'll put that $8,500 in our pocket and on our roads rather than in Morrell County's roads. I really do appreciate the working relationship we have with Morrell County because we, we do have opportunities to share resources a number of times, and it helps both of us out. So this truck came available, it's a, it's a really nice unit. We called, it came from Bend. We've had numerous conversations with their folks down there. They've actually already used it this year, so it's, it's ready to, ready to go right now. And so that's, we're requesting permission to buy this paint truck from Oregon's surplus properties.
Tom, a question I had, when we've used Morrell County's truck, we've ended up, every year we've used it, having to put some money into repairing their car.
Yeah, yeah, when we use it, if it breaks while we use it, we fix it. I mean, that's, and we've had, we've had to do repairs. Nothing that I would say is overwhelming cost-wise. I mean, it isn't like we've replaced a rear end or something, but, but it's always, you know, we've always had to do repairs, and so again, it would just make sense to do repairs on our own equipment rather than somebody else's.
My understanding is this is going to take some $1,500, $2,000 worth of repairs to make it fully serviceable?
No, this truck, this truck's ready to go.
Oh, I thought I read that it was going to take more.
No.
Okay.
No, this truck is, is, is ready to, matter of fact, if we get approval, we'll probably go to Salem tomorrow and drive it home.
So are we looking at $8,500 or $10,000?
$8,500 is what the cost of the machine, the $10,000 that you're reading, there's $10,000 worth of spare parts that come with the truck.
Oh, okay. I thought we were going to need to pay more in, to replace parts of the paint equipment on this truck, and I was just trying to get the full value.
Says, yeah, in our estimate, it comes with $10,000 worth of spare parts.
Excellent.
In fact, I think one of the pictures, yeah, the picture, the very last picture shows the entire back cab full of, that's, that's all boxes of parts. And the reason ODOT's getting rid of those parts is because this is the last paint truck in the fleet that uses any of those, so everything that was on the shelf that was brand-new goes with the truck.
Great opportunity. Does it fit within your equipment purchase program in lieu of something else, or how it are?
Oh, yeah, it's, within, within the budget. I mean, we're fine that, from that standpoint.
Tom, just offhand, if we had to buy a brand-new paint truck, what would it cost?
A similar truck to this, $150,000 to $220,000.
Okay, so we've saved a chunk of change.
Quite a bit. Mr. Chair, move approval of the authorization to purchase the paint truck.
Second, any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. And then the last item.
Yeah, three years ago, the public works department was blessed with the park and a number of things that go along with that. We've had, we've had some changes in management of the park, and one of the things that we recognized is the fact that the house was part of the payment package for, for the park person. Well, that's fine when you have somebody that's living at the park. Our current manager lives 15 minutes away from the park, which doesn't, and has no intention of ever living at the park. So really, what, what happens is he's, he's not getting the benefit of his full compensation package because he can't utilize that. It made more sense to me to actually, if, if down the line, if we would ever change managers and, and they would like to use the residents, that we actually deduct that from compensation rather than include that in the package, because then what, what happens is you've got a lot more level playing field. So that's, that's one thing, one reason that I started looking at this. And then when I, when I got to looking at the overall compensation that our park manager was getting, I felt that based on the job that he was asked to do, it was, it was a touch on the low side. So I got with Doug and our HR department, and we discussed it, and then I talked with finance. The, this year, we actually raised our camping fees by $5. The money that that's going, between the money that that's going to generate and the money that's, that's being saved, we've, in the current, or the budget year that we just finished, we, we saved almost $3,000 off the utilities. And I think that's a direct result of, number one, the manager is doing a very good job of being conservative with the utilities and then the house not being lived in all the time. So primarily, what we're asking is to, is a three-phase program to get the park manager wages up to a level equal to a lead person out at the road department. This is part of the road department union. And we're not asking that it just be approved every year. The only way it's, the only way that we're going to increase that amount is if the revenues or revenue stream pays for that. So currently, I'm asking for a $500 increase in salary, and the current revenues that we've gained from the increase in fees is, we'll pay for that. So it's paid for currently. It's not money that we're not betting on the come. And then the, and with two subsequent $500 increases down the line, as long as the revenues support that, to get this up to a level where I feel that it's, it should be. That's pretty much it in a nutshell.
Questions?
Has this manager ever lived in the house?
No.
Never has, never used it?
No.
So what, what's going to be done with the house?
Actually, the house, the house doubles not only as, as a residence, but it's also the office. It's, so, so one whole third of the house is, is office and will be, will continue to be office space. So other than, for instance, if, if folks had an event and they needed a changing area or something like that, that we could, that we could do that, but, so primarily, the house is still going to be used, utilized by park staff. It'll be, or eating their lunches, or, or, you know, the office, the office uses, but it won't, there isn't a lot of other use that we can do with it at this time.
Okay, so it's organized, the management there is organized, so there is, is there onsite management all the time?
We, we have a camp host program, plus we have a seasonal employee. So between the park manager, the camp host, and the seasonal employee, they, we have, we have adequate coverage at the park all the time.
Okay, other questions?
None from many.
I will add that we've had numerous positive comments about the park these last two years. I've gone up, looked at the park. We've had a meeting up there with park board. Just a really good program. So, Tom, thank you for that.
Yep. That's, that's nothing I did.
We just knew you could make it out.
Okay, I'm ready for a motion.
Mr. Chair, move we approve the step-one classification adjustment for the park manager position.
I'll second that. Other questions? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom. Okay, next item is the school-based mental health work, staff report, and who is presenting that this morning?
Everyone's looking at each other.
I can come up although I don't have that.
Amy Ashen Williams, one of the preparedness team.
Okay.
Jennifer Blake, HR Director. This is coming before the board as the Hermeston School District has been working with GOBE and our Human Services Department to create a program that they're calling the RISE Program to offer mental health services inside the schools for Hermeston School District. So this is coming before the board now that we have approval of the funds from GOBE to basically authorize the creation of the positions so that we can man this program. So with that, Amy is asking for a program manager, two, excuse me, and three service providers to be able to service this contact.
Okay, questions?
Is the funding from GOBE, is that assured?
Mr. Campbell, I talked with him last week. He said yes, as of July one. He was hoping the program would be up and going.
But we don't know how much.
I do not know the amount, no.
But it says it'll be a minimum of three?
Hundred and thirty-five thousand is what they're anticipating.
Which is adequate enough to cover the cost of this?
No. Not a hundred and thirty-five thousand for those many positions.
Well, ninety-three, seventy-four, and sixty-eight.
Oh, excuse me.
The facility will fund this program for three hundred thousand.
I was looking at the wrong dollar.
Okay.
So that will cover it?
And then it says that they will separately be looking to GOBE, or asking GOBE for a hundred and thirty-five thousand for the three used vehicles?
Yes.
Yes, that.
So essentially, no net cost to the county? Is the grant from GOBE a ongoing thing? Like, next year, are we going to be looking at this coming onto the budget? Or are we going to be looking at GOBE still funding it?
I wish Amy was here. Unfortunately, I, that's not information that I have. You know, obviously, if we don't have the funding, we won't continue the program, so it would be contingent upon.
So it'll be hired, subject to that?
Yeah.
And they'll know that coming in?
Yes.
I don't have anything further.
Okay. Ready? No other questions? Okay.
Mr. Chair, move approval of the request from Human Services to hire three additional people to work the RISE Program at Hermeston School District.
Second. Any other comments?
It's actually four positions.
Four positions?
Two, yes it is.
Yeah.
Yes, it is. I missed words, said two.
Okay, motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. All right. Next item is the post-PERS employment.
Dan Lenai, Director of Administrative Services. Beverly Reed, our library, law librarian, also clerks, works in the records department, does our purchasing, and also helps backs us up in IT, is retiring, or has retired as the end of last month, on the thirtieth, is returning back to work to, actually on Monday it was, July third, to work as a post-PERS employee, so we need to have that approved. She will be helping us to man our office one day a week in Milton-Freewater, doing clerk duties there, providing services for the county there. At the same time, she'll continue to be a backup for the records department, and will be doing our computer purchasing at the same time. So she'll be kind of that floater to fill in when they are on vacation and stuff. We went ahead and removed our part-time employee that we had in the records office, and so we're keeping Beverly to also fill that position there. So we're requesting for her to come back to work as a post-PERS half-time employee, where she'll have to monitor her hours and make sure she does not exceed the thousand and, what did it be, twenty or?
Thousand thirty-nine.
Thousand thirty-nine. There we go. Any questions, Commissioners?
So, Dan, you've, this person is retired, so that's opened up a spot. Has that spot been filled?
What the deal is, is in our budget, we went ahead and placed that we were reducing her down to a point five FTE from a point eight, which is saving us about thirty-five thousand dollars.
So part of your budgeted scale down?
Yes.
Yeah. I have nothing further.
Okay.
Chair, move approval of the post-PERS employment?
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thanks, Dan. Okay, the transfer of property. This, I believe, is the City of Stanfield.
City of Stanfield. This is coming before the board for approval. A piece of property unimproved, lot in City of Stanfield, was, we're close on for due to property taxes. It is located basically in the flood zone for the City of Stanfield, which they have made it as a parkway, and it's right in the middle of that. And they had previously tried to acquire it, therefore unable to do so from the property owner. Now that the county owns it, they are requesting that the county convey it to the City of Stanfield for public purposes.
Okay, what's time limit on, when the county can be, is it twenty years?
Twenty years.
Yeah, okay. And it is right next to their park?
It's actually right in the middle of it.
In the middle of the park?
There's the pictures. Here it is. Next page.
Oh, I've got a picture.
It's right basically between those two trees.
Right.
Yeah, and it's on both sides of the canal.
Okay, yeah.
That is smack dab in there, isn't it? Mr. Chair, move approval.
Okay, I'll second that. Any questions, comments? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Do we have an executive session scheduled? Okay, we have four people here that, I'm assuming you didn't want to be here just to sit through a board meeting. So again, I'm going to ask for public comment.
Sir, I apologize to the Commissioners.
Would you come up and introduce your stand?
Yes. I apologize to the Commissioners. I'm Ron Dillon with Nitro and the Blues, and I thought the meeting started at nine-thirty. I don't know if I can still address you on that.
You certainly may.
I came over from Boise, and I was sitting out there thinking I was early, and I was actually late, so my apologies, but thank you so much for.
There's a little line between here and there that changes the time zone on you, didn't it?
That's absolutely correct. This is our second year coming back with Oregon's only motorcycle hill climb. We absolutely had a ball last year. I've been putting events on since I was a teenager in nineteen-seventy-nine, and this will be event number two-hundred-and-thirty-seven for me. I've done everything from Charlie Daniels concerts to motorcycle stuff to kids' bicycle races and everything in between. But to this point, it's been a real pleasure working with Yumitella County and the various departments here. It feels like everybody's pulling on the same end of the rope and wants us to be successful. Working with Jim Whitney has been a pleasure as well. That gentleman is very sharp and knows his business and very professional to deal with. So today, I just wanted to check in with you. We did apply for a zoning permit again to do the event. We had no problems last year. I was a little nervous going into that because of the hill. It's quite rocky, and I thought we could really have kind of a rocky, dusty mess out here. But we learned something wonderful about Yumitella County. You've got some absolutely magical dirt. And we built a watering system out there, and Kerry Peterson, who used to be on ABC White World of Sports, winning the Widowmaker thirty and forty years ago, he's been all over the world hill climbing, and he said, "That's the best dirt I've ever seen." He called it chocolate cake. It holds its moisture, and it kind of slid down and covered the rocks, and yet at the same time, we don't have any erosion going on out there. We went out with Jim after the event last year and threw grass seed on it, watered it some more, and it's waist-high grass out there. So I'll be, pending your approval, we'll be firing up the watering system. And last year, you could see big green stripes on the hill before and even a little bit after the event because we put a lot of water on it. So we're planning on doing the hill climb again on Friday, July twenty-first. That would be the semi-pro morning where we run kids and racers over forty and so on, women. And then we are, I'm sure you've heard the buzz around town, we're also doing Thunder in the Blues, which will be the first motorcycle race held in the Pendleton Roundup Arena since nineteen-forty. I've been working with Casey Beard and the Roundup Committee on that. So logistically, how that works is Friday morning, we'll be hill climbing from eight until about two, and then we'll run over to the arena. And the Thunder in the Blues flat track race will be from three to, we hope to finish by ten. We understand that the laws, we have to be done by eleven. Will be done between ten and ten-thirty, we believe. Lot of buzz, lot of excitement about that. And then we'll go back to the hill on Saturday and run from nine to about six. That'll be pro qualifying in the four-fifty main and the side-by-side event. And then we'll run Sunday morning from nine to about two with the finals and get it all done. But we're excited to be here. There's a lot more buzz than last year. We weren't going to, because the motels are maxing out, we were actually going to do our own weekend, and we were going to be a little earlier, but Jim called me months ago and said, "Well, gosh, that's right on top of the Maroon Five concert," and I realized there's no way that would be a good move for anybody. So we bumped it back a week to coincide with Pendleton Bike Week. I like working with Eric. I could give you five or six reasons why it's kind of a pain to run the same time as him, and five or six reasons why it's very beneficial to run the same time as him. We're starting to pick up a lot of local partners now. We're working with Tia at the Wild Horse Casino. She's helping us on some rooms. Boy, I can't say enough good about the Gray Beal Distributing the Beer guys. They've stepped up as our title partner, and Barry and Brian are great guys over there. But we're just excited to be here. This is a lot of fun. My wife is in her mode where now she wants to move to Pendleton. We put these various events on. First, she wanted to move to Snowville, Utah, and now she wants to move to Pendleton. So who knows? We might wind up over here yet. But nice community, nice people, and we appreciate your help and your support. Do you have any questions or comments or concerns from me?
Just a comment that Yumitella County is a lot closer to things that happen than Snowville is.
Yeah, that's correct.
It's a long way to anywhere from Snowville.
It sure is. It sure is. Yeah, yeah, this is, you really are in the middle of everything. You really are. Two hundred miles to Boise, two hundred to Portland, two-fifty to Seattle. I see at Spokane, as a guy that's been doing events all his life, I'm kind of sitting here thinking, wow, why didn't I see the Pendleton thing decades ago? You know, it just kind of went right by me. But I think everybody's starting to get it now, and that vastly underutilized Roundup Arena, I think there's going to be all kinds of possibilities there. The flat track thing is going to be interesting because there currently is not a single national flat track race in the entire Northwest. It's kind of like NASCAR, there just isn't any. And so the AMA, this is running as a semi-pro, kind of a regional race this year. If it goes really well, the AMA may push me to make it a full-blown national next year, which would be the only national flat track event in the entire Northwest. And that would bring in the full-blown Harley-Davidson semis and all that kind of stuff. Then it starts to become a question of can the infrastructure and the town handle that and Bike Week all together? I mean, I'm very familiar with Sturgis. I used to go to Sturgis when I was a kid, when it only drew fifty thousand people, and now it gets two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. And that's a blessing and a curse all at the same time. But definitely, you've got all the potential here to do a lot of neat things. And I'm talking to Jim about some other kinds of events. He's got a lot of very interesting ideas about how he'd like to make that an event property. We'll see how that goes in the future. There's a group out of Seattle that's bugging Jim and I that would like to build a sprint boat track out there. It's a great property, whether it's being utilized for cattle or crops or events. It's got a lot of potential, as base this whole area.
They can handle Roundup, they can handle this.
Yeah. So I know that, I know we need to take care of insurance. I was on the phone with my gal, and it's actually been issued. I just don't have a copy with me, but I will be emailing that to you right away. We will, as always, name the county as a co-insured entity on that and have the medics out there and do all the things that we need to do to keep it safe. But as usual, we didn't have a single injury out there last year. The medics were bored to death. I saw one of them actually asleep, which I love. When your medics are asleep during your event, that's about as good as it gets. And knock on wood, my insurance guy always tells me to bring up to groups like you the two-hundred-and-thirty-seven events, thirty-eight years, and we've never had a fatality or a lawsuit. So knock on wood, that's a record we're pretty proud of.
All right. Other questions?
None.
And you have, you're working on your permits through the county?
Yes, with Carol Johnson.
Great, all right.
She just told me that I needed to address you and get the sign-off on that paperwork, so.
I can't speak for the other Commissioners, but I received absolutely zero complaints from last year.
Nor did I get any, so.
That's excellent. And we really tried to reach out to those people in lower reef, because I feel bad for them because of the dust issues there. So we gave them some tickets and tried to, and Jim paid for some dust control, I paid for some dust control, so I think that was part of why you didn't get any complaints.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
You bet. Okay, ladies and gentlemen.
Just a quick comment. Actually, it's not a comment. My name's Rick George, I'm with Lightweights, and with my colleague, Herr Michael Caffey, who's the interim director for the county, and Carol Stee from GOBE. And we're just here to, we're going to be looking at the agenda in terms of what's on the agenda, and you'll see our faces here for, just for interest in what's going on in the county. We have a hundred and eighty employees in this county, and we serve almost four thousand people, so we want to be involved and understand what's going on relative to the issues that are on the agenda, so.
Okay, thank you.
Good to have you here.
Thanks. Real quickly, on the last item, Commissioners' reports. I will be out the rest of this week and next week with family vacation. We will resume as we get back. Bill?
Well, I too will be gone. George has been gone for a while, so he gets to come back and run the county by himself. Although, as I've said before, I'll be available by telephone, text, whatever means of communication we need to use.
I won't be, I'll be out of the country.
That's a shame. But I do want to comment that we have been busy with economic development projects. It's remarkable how things are starting to pop, and people are starting to make decisions on whether to expand or grow their businesses. Some new businesses coming to town. There's always, a lot of work goes into bringing a business to town and making sure all their questions are answered, that they find what they need, and get relationships built that they need to have. That's ongoing, and it's exciting to see that in the next five years, just two alone that we're talking to will bring over a thousand new employees to Yumitella County, well-paid employees. So when he's talking about can the infrastructure handle it, that's an ongoing question. We're really ramping up the efforts on housing, in which people will need a place to live. And we want to keep as many of them here in Yumitella County as we can without having them drive all the way from Tri-Cities. So that's what we've been spending a good deal of. So that's what we've been spending a good deal of time on. I think I've previously talked about the depots, so I'll let that one go. That's all I've got.
All right, thank you. If there's no other business, we are adjourned.